We call this meeting, we call this meeting to order. The invocation is going to be done this morning by Pastor Evan Grizzle from Apostolic Tabernacle of Wilmington.
God, we thank you for another day that you've given us and another time for our community leaders to assemble together. We ask that you would have your hand on the hearts and minds of each individual that speaks this morning. Allow our hearts to be your hearts and our thoughts to be your thoughts. Help us to pursue your will for our county through each decision that we make. We ask that you would grant our leaders wisdom and understanding as they steward our communities. And we ask that there would be unity and love here today and every day. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in facing the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they need to pull off the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, could you recognize Linda Thompson, please?
I will.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we're excited to announce the launch of a new language access tool that is now available for public use during our Board of Commissioner meetings. This innovative AI-powered translation and transcription service provided by Wordly enables attendees to access real-time translated, subtitled, and same-language captions in over 60 languages, meeting with their personal device or borrowing one of our tablets from the sign-in desk. After extensive testing over the past month, Wordly has proven to be an exceptional solution for enhancing language accessibility. This initiative is fully funded through the $25,000 Language Access Grant awarded to our office last spring and aligns closely with the mission of our Language Access Plan that you adopted some time ago. This tool represents a significant step forward in providing equitable service to residents, particularly the deaf and hard-of-hearing community and those with limited English proficiency. This technology bridges that gap by enabling attendees to follow discussions in their preferred language, ensuring our government meets residents where they are. The implementation of Wordly reflects a collaborative effort involving our Offices of Information and Technology, Communications, the Clerk's Office, the Office of Diversity and Equity, and certainly, we thank Commissioners Apple and Commissioner Pierce for helping us with this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, if I might make a comment so I could show everyone what we're talking about. I'm using one up here myself, and it's putting every word on here in large print. And might I say, myself as being a hearing impaired person since early childhood wearing hearing aids, it stretches across all ages and all demographics. So it is something that we think a lot about elderly. It's not all elderly people who need this. So you see that? That's awesome. If you need one, well, we direct you who to see. And it's nothing to be ashamed of because I'm using one myself, and it's very good for me to have. So thank you all very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Linda, thank you so much for making this happen. I know this has been, you know, I'd say a long journey, but it's a significant journey. These will be available at any county meeting, correct?
Right now, our county commissioner meetings, and we see the need to grow. We will make them accessible then.
But certainly, if someone were to call ahead and request one, we could make it available. We have plenty.
Yes.
So I hope the community out there hears this or reads this and will take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Move the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor of that? Aye. All right. It's time for our service awards.
Commissioners, good morning. Happy Christmas, happy holidays. This is the last time the Board will convene, I believe, in calendar year 2024. So congratulations to an outstanding year. This is the meeting that we always have the opportunity to recognize folks that are retiring, and unfortunately, we have someone today. But we also honor people who have reached significant milestones in their service to New Hanover County. And then we also have the opportunity to recognize new folks that have joined the team since the Board was last at its day meeting. And so always thank you for the opportunity to do that. And we've got one retiree this morning. I'd invite Colonel Johnson to come forward. If you would, sir, allow me to read a bit about your time. Congratulations. Put you closer to the camera. After 28 years of distinguished service, Colonel Greg Johnson is retiring from the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Colonel Johnson began his career at the New Hanover County Jail, where he was responsible for the care, the supervision, and the order of inmates. His passion for mentorship led him to become a school resource officer in the Uniform Patrol Division. Stationed at Williston, he not only ensured safety, but also became a mentor through the DARE program, positively impacting many young lives. In 2000, Colonel Johnson joined the Emergency Response Team, showcasing his leadership and tactical skills in various roles, including team leader and the breach operator. His commitment to excellence continued as he founded the Detention Center's first Special Response Team, demonstrating visionary leadership. Ascending through the ranks, he served as Lieutenant, Assistant Division Commander, and eventually Captain of the detention facility. Later, after serving as Head of the Services Division, he chose to return to the Detention Center, reflecting his dedication to this core professional area of the Sheriff's Office. Promoted by Sheriff Ed McMahon to Major and later to Colonel, he led Uniform Patrol and Support Services, significantly enhancing troop welfare initiatives. Johnson's tenure has been marked by integrity, compassion, and an unwavering commitment to service. We bid farewell to Colonel Johnson, honor a career that has truly made a difference. Please join me in celebrating the career of Colonel Gregory Dale Johnson and his remarkable 28 years of service to New Hanover County and the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Colonel, you well-earned it. No one can ever replace you, not even going to try. We just hope that the men and women that follow behind you have the same passion and vision that you've shared and kept our community safe for so very long. Congratulations for everything that you've done, and I invite you to please visit with the Board and have your picture made. Thank you, sir. Thank you for serving our community and congratulations. So Commissioners, we're going to recognize folks that have achieved significant milestones, and that begins for us first recognizing folks with five years of service, and we move forward in five-year increments. And so I'm going to begin with five-year service recognition. And when I call your name, if you would, please come forward. I'd like to be the first to thank you and shake your hand, and then ask you to visit with the Board and also have your picture made. First recognition this morning with five years of service is Theodore Angelus, Facilities Management. Congratulations. Thank you. Commissioners, also with five years of service this morning, we're going to recognize Brandon Evans, Environmental Management. Brandon, congratulations. Commissioners, we've got one person to recognize this morning with 10 years of service, someone that you know well, it's someone that you work closely with, Commissioner Rob Zapple. 10 years of service to New Hanover County. Congratulations, sir. Commissioner, congratulations. We're going to move to 15 years of service recognition this morning, and we have one person with her, with us, for Dwyer, Department of Social Services. Thank you, sir, for all that you've done. Commissioners, we're going to recognize someone this morning that's provided 20 years of service to our community, Edna Johnson, the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Thank you, ma'am. to public service and have chosen New Hanover County and doing a job. And whether it's five years or 20 years, I think they deserve another round of applause. If you would lead us in that. Thank you. I'd like to announce a pleasure to introduce, and I need these glasses for everyone. It's a pleasure to introduce folks that have joined the team in the last month or so. And so when I call your name, if you would, please stand up. We want to give you a proper welcome to New Hanover County, and so that's going to mean we're going to give you a loud round of applause. And so first this morning, from Planning and Land Use joining the team is Ryan Beal. Ryan, thank you for coming to work with us. The Department of Social Services, Thomas Booth, is joining the team. Thank you, sir. From the Senior Resource Center, Catherine Saron is joining the team. Catherine, thank you for coming to work with us. In the Engineering Department, Brian Hall. Brian, thank you for joining the team. Joining in the Tax Office, Cookie Hazen. Cookie, thank you for coming to work with us. In the Department of Social Services, Kinder Jones is joining. Kinder, thank you so very much for coming to work with us. Also in the Department of Social Services, Wanda Shepherd is joining. Wanda, thank you. Planning and Land Use, McKay Watson is joining. McKay, thank you for coming to work with us. And in the Communications Department, Anthony Williams has joined. Anthony, thank you for coming to work with us. So Commissioners, that concludes employee recognition. The opportunity to do this at your, thank you.
Next is recognition of Government Finance Officers Association Award, annual budget, Mr. Eric Cradle.
Good morning. The county is fortunate to have a budget department that performs at the highest level. After the adoption of the fiscal year '25 budget, our Budget Officer, Amanda Kostuziak, led her team in preparing a comprehensive adopted budget document that thoroughly and clearly explained the county's annual budget. That document was submitted to the GFOA and has already been judged by them to meet the highest standards for budgeting. In fact, for two of the areas that they judge, including strategic goals and budget process, all three of the GFOA reviewers awarded the highest possible score. So congratulations to the budget team, and I'd like to ask Amanda to introduce her teammates.
Good morning. Very excited to be here to recognize the dedicated and hard-working staff that's the budget team. So if y'all will please stand, we have Scott Steinheber, Jeremy Ashworthy, Gwen Hill, Jane Horow, and David Rice.
I think we need to get a picture made with all that staff.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next is the Presentation of Cape Fear Public Utility Authority Annual Report for 2024. Mr. Ken Walker, welcome.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for this opportunity to bring you our 2024 Year in Review. As you may recall, CFPUA bylaws require that we have an annual meeting in November where the Executive Director presents this annual report to our Board, and then thereafter presents it to our sponsoring governmental entities, the City of Wilmington and New Hanover County. This is my report. I am very pleased to announce that the condition of your authority remains strong and financially sound. This year, we can highlight a few milestones that indicate progress on CFPUA's strategic plan, and you will hear a word in my report quite frequently, and that word is historic. This year, we adopted a historic $120 million budget designed to foster orderly growth and retain essential services. We also saw the initiation of a historic galvanized service line replacement project, mostly funded by grant funds. We continue historic investments in our community, and we initiated the first utility consolidation with another entity since CFPUA was initially formed from the City of Wilmington and New Hanover County Utilities. We end this calendar year with national award recognition in wastewater treatment plant compliance, water treatment plant compliance for watershed protection, and a North Carolina First for water treatment research. In 2024, we reorganized and folded CFPUA's Customer Service Department into our Finance Department, seeking greater organizational efficiency while providing the same quality of service to our customers. We initiated new technologies and training to improve the customer service experience, and we are nearing completion of the renovations to our headquarters building at 235 Government Center Drive. Your water and wastewater utility continues to grow, with 1,213 meters installed and 11,169,000 and some change in conveyed infrastructure assets over the first 10 months of this calendar year. And despite a rate increase necessitated by inflationary pressures and costs associated with the replacement of the South Side Wastewater Treatment Plant, our wastewater and water services are still the most affordable in the region, with average amounts of customers' incomes spent on water and wastewater service with our authority below that of Brunswick County, Fayetteville, PWC, Pender County, and Anwassa. Our system development charges remain some of the lowest in the region, demonstrating our commitment to the economic vitality of our community and our county. This year, we quantified the economic impact of our authority on the local economy, confirming the wisdom of our Board's investment in infrastructure for the good of current and future generations. Key findings from that economic impact study suggest that for every $1 million spent by CFPUA over the last 10 years, we created 1.7 jobs per year in New Hanover County, and that our spending supported over 1,000 jobs on average directly and indirectly, and that each dollar that we invest together generates a $1.66 in economic output. The report also noted that the loss of our services could cost the regional economy somewhere between $70 and $93 million in economic output per day. This last statistic is especially sobering, and it reaffirms the importance of vigilance and proactive maintenance and the management of our critical water and wastewater systems. And as our neighbors to the west in Asheville can attest, these are very valid numbers. I read recently that the storm out west was a $53 billion impact to our neighbors, not the least of which was 160 water systems were directly or indirectly impacted. Now, key to our vision of serving future generations is the replacement of the South Side Wastewater Treatment Plant project. Originally opened 52 years ago, this community asset now stands ready for total replacement. So 50 years is the statistical age expected for a water or wastewater treatment plant. And some water and wastewater treatment plants can be like people. They can, they can age and do well and a little bit older. Some fail before their average age. So we are looking at this major community asset, and our Board has done the work necessary to provide for the next 50 years through the award of a $13.1 million contract covering Phase One of the progressive design-build contract to replace the plant. And of course, as we were going to replace it, this is the best time to go ahead and add existing, add new capacity to provide for the orderly growth of both the City of Wilmington and New Hanover County. Now, in October of this year, that same design-build team completed the project's 30% design package with updated cost ranges. CFPUA staff are now evaluating that report, which contained unexpected cost increases, and we are reimagining the project through a validation and value engineering process. Our end goal, however, remains unchanged. That goal is to replace the existing facility and to add additional capacity to support orderly growth. We will achieve that goal, and we'll do so in the most cost-effective manner possible. Site work is expected to begin on this very important project in 2025. Now consolidations of local government entities and services is often difficult and very labor-intensive. Such consolidations are never to be taken lightly, but when done right, bring value to all involved for decades to come. I am very pleased to report that our authority completed a historic agreement with the town of Wrightsville Beach that meets the needs of our new partners and ensures the cost of consolidation are not, repeat, not borne by existing CFPUA customers. In a show of support for that utility consolidation and consolidation statewide, our delegation to the North Carolina General Assembly secured historic funding, $25 million, to support the consolidation, and we are deeply grateful to our delegation for that support. In October, our galvanized service line replacement team successfully met regulatory deadlines for compliance with the revised and improved lead and copper rule, providing our customers for the first time with ready access to information about 592 galvanized service lines discovered within our distribution system. We hosted a presidential visit that highlighted our nation-leading work in this area, and we received $9.16 million in bipartisan infrastructure law funding, of which, and this is important, 8.4 million was principal forgiveness or grant. So eight out of nine dollars is grant funding for that very important project. And we're now in the middle and ready to begin replacing this aging infrastructure throughout mostly the City of Wilmington. Now, as we remind ourselves each day, infrastructure management is a key function of any utility. And as good stewards of our infrastructure, we have projects that span the full spectrum of potential activities for the water sector. From major investments in city or county-specific projects to very difficult and costly water and sanitary sewer replacement needs, our focus is on the future by renewing the infrastructure gifts from past community leaders and providing for the orderly planned growth of our county and our city. As part of that work, we have a very important series of projects that supports the county's Strategic Plan Focus Area of Workforce and Economic Development, and our Board, CFPUA's Board's Strategic Plan Focus Area of Financial Liability. Collectively, these 15 resilient infrastructure projects in northern New Hanover County will drive economic growth and opportunity. They also comprise the single largest economic development project ever undertaken by CFPUA, totaling approximately $107.5 million through the end of the first quarter of calendar year 2026. And then we anticipate that we'll leverage many times that investment in new infrastructure and new customers who will connect to this very important project, or series of projects. Over the last year, we've also engaged in groundbreaking partnerships with New Hanover County to meet the needs of county citizens. Thanks to generous grants from this Board, we are able to undertake historic pilot projects to connect county citizens to better water supplies, provide community water stations in three locations impacted by PFAS and failing wells, and prepare a new prioritization plan to extend water and wastewater services to at-risk communities in the county. Thanks to generous support, again, from our North Carolina General Assembly delegation and timely grants, we also have $22 million in grant funding to extend water services to those same at-risk communities. Finally, as a special-purpose unit of local government, we honor the public trust by holding ourselves to the highest fiduciary... holding ourselves to the highest fiduciary standards. As verified in our latest annual comprehensive financial report and audit presented to our board this year, your authority is healthy and well-managed, with revenues to cover expenditures as well as fund a very robust and growing capital improvement program. Our board has taken prudent steps to ensure our financial needs are met through measured, well-thought-out financial policies and community investments. So on behalf of CFPUA's customers, staff, and stakeholders, I first want to thank your staff, who have remained steadfast partners in our activities. You couldn't ask for better partners in local government than the New Hanover County staff and the City of Wilmington staff. We stand on their shoulders, and we do great things because of that partnership. We also would like to thank you directly for your support to our activities. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ken, thank you for that wonderful, really upbeat, positive report. I just wanted to circle back quickly to the South Side Wastewater Treatment Plant, which I know we're going to hear more about, and just to make it clear that this is not something we're doing by choice, that it is a state mandate that by 2030, we will have, we will not only need, but we will we will have to have that increased capacity. So this is something that has been talked about for, I don't know, at least the last decade, but is now urgent that we get this job done for our community and for continued growth in especially the southern part of our county.
Yes, sir. There are two major drivers to replace that plant. First, as Commissioners Apple pointed out, is to accommodate orderly planned growth, we will need new capacity by 2030, maybe a little earlier. And just as important, maybe more important, is that facility is now over 50 years old. And I use this analogy, the plant works fine, we have a number of repairs that occur from breakdowns over time, like an older person like myself. And it's a little bit like asking an older person to run a marathon every time we have a major weather event. That might, the plant might make it through just fine, or, again, the plant is the beating heart of our southern wastewater treatment system, and we could have catastrophic failures driven by the high flows that come and are associated with storm events. So to avoid that, we plan on building a brand-new, younger treatment plant next door, and that's that will provide for not just one generation, but multiple generations. And we'll mothball the older plant, and we'll look at it, and we'll see what we can do to perhaps put it back into service after, we'll have to, we'll have to take it out, take the water off of it, so we can determine, are there aspects of that plant that we can reasonably see 20 or 40 or 60 years of additional life? And what improvements do we have to make to ensure that and be able to put that plant maybe back into service with improvements for the next generation beyond the two that we're serving with a new plant today?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a question about the wells, the contaminated wells, have they all been identified? And if not, how does one get their well tested? And if they if they wanted service, how would that work?
So I begin by saying that we should give credit where credit is due. In September of 2021, I visited your county manager and shared our concerns about well contamination, and he and county staff approached the Secretary of North Carolina Environmental Quality, Elizabeth Beiser, and asked for the protections of the consent order, asked those protections to be extended to New Hanover County. That in and of itself was a major movement. From there, Kim Oars, our upstream neighbor who is the primary source of pollution, was required to start testing the individual wells within not just this county, but the five counties that are below Kim Oars. There's around, there's a little over 19,000 wells within New Hanover County. I don't have an exact number of how many of those have been tested. About one in five test positive for Kim Oars pollution, about one in five. We will be glad, as part of our weekly update, to to do a quick scan research of how many of the 19,000 wells have been tested. It's a slow process because the way it works is Kim Oars starts where contamination has been discovered, and then they slowly work out in a circle, and they gather in more and more wells, and if they find another contaminated well, then they expand it further. They send notices to New Hanover County well owners in partnership with your county staff. And if you, if the well has not been tested, you can contact the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. They have a website that we can help connect them to, your own staff can connect them to, so that they can make a request for testing. And if they're within the testing parameters of Kim Oars, Kim Oars is required by the consent order to provide that testing. If they're not, then it's likely that they will eventually be, because the testing area grows with time.
So if they wanted to test, even if they weren't in the zone or the circle, they could still do it probably privately?
Privately. As a matter of fact, we have one of the best private labs in New Hanover County for this purpose. So there are private lab testing opportunities.
If they wanted to know more, they could just contact Cape Fear Public Utility Authority?
Yes, and or your own environmental services staff. We work in tandem together to try to educate the public.
Mr. Chair, may I add on to Commissioner Walker's thought there and Ken's well-worded answer? For those of you who are listening out there, that help is on the way. I think the ultimate fix, once you've tested your well, and it does show that there's positive for contamination, that we are working on a larger plan to increase the distribution system of CFPUA, because of course, all CFPUA water is now filtered through our GAC plant that was all paid for by rate payers. The ultimate goal is to have those who caused the pollution to pay that. And indeed, we have lawsuits both through CFPUA and our own county moving forward through the system to force those that created the pollution to pay for all these solutions, which are very, very expensive. Meantime, we are getting support from the state and our federal government and our county to move forward with increasing the distribution system so that people who are currently on wells will eventually have connected to the filtered water coming out of the GAC plant, CFPUA. I know that's a long statement in there. Ken, can you add anything to that, or is there anything I've said that you'd agree or disagree?
I'll take the opportunity to say again to our neighbors upstream, if you truly believe in your corporate values and you want to be a good neighbor, you will come to the table and make restitution to your neighbors downstream. If you do not, then we will find justice in the in the North Carolina and the federal justice system, and we will acquire restitution for our customers. And we are going to make sure that our customers are made whole.
Thank you.
Ken, one is all the pipes on the right hand side of the road on 421.
I would have to, I would have to research that and get back to you. We have a large number of projects, but so does our partners in Pender County. I'm not sure if it's one of our projects or one of Pender County's projects.
It's, well, it's in New Hanover County. It's just, they're just lined up all the way down 421.
Well, we are, we are, we have more projects underway than we've ever had before. And what I'll do is with Kami's help, we'll do some research, and then we'll put it in the weekly update that comes to your board representatives and to the county manager's office. Any question that I couldn't answer today, and we're writing down a couple of notes, I'll make sure that it works up into that weekly update, and you can find out what that project is by Friday.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question. You may or may not be able to answer septic systems. We know, we have an idea how many are out there, how old they are, if, I mean, I know it's a good question.
Well, that does fall within the purview of your county staff in terms of knowledge of of the number and the accuracy of them. I would say, and we very much appreciate that your generous gift to us to do a study of at-risk communities is a partnership, where we're working with your staff to look into the records to try to identify the top five or 10 communities that have the most what challenges with either failing or non-compliant septic systems. And we will then develop a plan to address that if necessary through connection to CFPUA. So that's an iterative step, and your board generously funded that study.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else?
No. Ken, as of a few minutes ago, this board approved me to come and work with you and Rob and the other board at CFPUA. I very much look forward to doing that in the coming days.
And we look forward to having you on board. Your first meeting will be a doozy. We'll be talking about South Side Wastewater Treatment Plant. I'd be glad to get with you before then.
Yes, sir. I'll be in touch.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Next is presentation of New Hanover County Water Quality Monitoring Program 2324 Final Report. Mr. Brad Rosoff.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm happy to be here again this year. Again, I'm Brad Rosoff. I'm a marine biologist with Coastal Protection Engineering based here in Wilmington. Our firm does a wide array of coastal protection projects. We get our hands dirty in beach nourishment, beach management plans, coastal structures and the like. But today, I have the privilege of reporting to you on this water quality monitoring program. It's really become kind of a, I've managed this project for, I hate to admit, a whopping 17 years now. I've been standing before this board to report our annual report. So with that said, I'll delve into the program if I can. All right, good. I've got that going now. So first, before I get into the results of this past 12 months of this past year of monitoring, and I'll get in a little bit of long-term results as well, first, let me give you just a little bit of context, let you know what we do, where we do, and why we do what we do. First, you can see on the screen here is a map of the county that's delineated by the various watersheds. And you can see, as you well know, here in New Hanover County, we are basically a peninsula, almost an island of sorts, with the Atlantic Ocean to the east, with the Cape Fear River to the west. And the county is pretty characterized by this network of tidal creeks that creates this, you know, mesh of waterways that go through the county. So we've got a lot of interaction with tidal creeks here, and it's important to maintain the health of these tidal creeks, as it truly is the fabric of our community. Many folks recreate in these tidal creeks. We fish, we canoe, kayak boat, oyster. Sometimes we swim in these tidal creeks. So it's a part of our culture here in New Hanover County, and it's a lot of the attraction to the county for many people as well. So that's part of the reason why we've been monitoring this creek on behalf of the county for the past many, many years. For this program, we've been monitoring for the past 17 years, a network of eight tidal creeks now, and we go out and visit 20 sampling sites within those eight tidal creeks. And you can see that map that shows the colored creeks there on the area. They're mostly the unincorporated portions of the county. UNCW handles monitoring within the incorporated portions for the most part. Along with these eight tidal creeks, we also have been monitoring for the past about seven or eight years, if I recall correctly, a network of monitoring sites within Airly Gardens. Now, Airly Gardens, the lake there within Airly Gardens is not a tidal creek, it's a freshwater pond in essence. It's fed by groundwater, rainwater comes in, it also gets stormwater input as well. But it spills out into Bradley Creek, but it doesn't have any exchange with Bradley Creek, which is a tidal creek. So that's the scope of what we are doing. And now let me tell you a little bit about how we do what we do. And we visit these tidal creeks and Airly Gardens on a monthly basis. We've been going out, you know, 12 months out of the year. And what I'll report today is, you can see on the screen, between July 2023 and June 2024, kind of following that fiscal year, what we will report on this year. But when we go out each time, we go out and we try to collect these water samples and get these, the data from these creeks as soon as the tidal creek starts to change from a high tide to a low tide. So, you know, the water comes on in, think about a dock, water rises, and at some point it starts to go out. We like to collect it as best as we can, as close to that same tidal cycle. So we're collecting apples-to-apples water parameter, or on the same portion of the tidal cycle. If we went out on a low tide one time, on a high tide another time, we're looking at different quality in the water at that time. So we're trying to keep it consistent as best we can. So again, going back to why I like this project, it gets me out of the office three times a month. I get to spend a few hours on the water, whether driving around, collecting these water samples, or getting in a boat and doing the same. So it's a, it's a fun project as well. Get to get back to nature a little bit, especially see these beautiful scenes like this, which is collected from up in Futch Creek, pretty uninhabited areas. It's really beautiful habitat up there. But we go out there, and each site that we visit, we collect three types of data, three different types of parameters, and I'll walk through those really briefly with you. We collect physical parameters, which we collect by putting a probe in the water. It's called a sond. And we collect things such as temperature, pH, turbidity, which measures how clear the water is, conductivity, which is very similar salinity, and a few other metrics. That data we collect instantaneously. We write down that data, and we have that in the record. But we also collect water samples that are brought back and analyzed at an analytical lab. And these are biological parameters such as chlorophyll. Chlorophyll, obviously, if you have a lot of chlorophyll in the water, it tells you you've got plant life. It's indicative of an algal bloom. So we don't want to see a lot of chlorophyll in the water. We also collect another biological parameter in our tidal creeks is Enterococcus bacteria. It's a type of bacteria that's prevalent in the guts of any warm-blooded animal, so dogs, cats, raccoons, horses, as well as humans. So it's an indicator, when you see high levels of that bacteria, it's an indicator of some sort of contamination. And then along with those parameters, we also collect chemical parameters, and this is only for Airly Gardens. We only collect these chemical parameters, which are two different suites of nutrients, fanciedly called orthophosphate and nitrate-nitrite nutrients. We collect that at Airly Gardens because we're not concerned with human interactions in the water there. People aren't swimming there, so bacteria is not an issue there. We're not concerned about people getting sick from swimming in Airly Gardens. Rather, we're more concerned from the aesthetics, what could be feeding any of these algal blooms that we see regularly in Airly Gardens? And so nutrients feeds algal growth or plant life growth. So we see a lot of nutrients that's problematic. So that's what we do on this monthly basis. So I'm just going to jump in really quickly here and give you the snapshots, snapshot summary view of this past 12 months of sampling. And in your report, that's in the agenda, we've got a lot more data that breaks it down into statistics and numbers and graphs and charts, long-term data as well. But what you see on your screen here is the simplified version that makes it pretty easy for us to see, which is green is good, yellow is fair, red is poor in this case. And the way we define the weather, a metric, and you can see there on the screen that underneath your parameter, we've got turbidity, dissolved oxygen, chlorophyll, and Enterococcus bacteria. Each of those parameters have a standard attributed to them. So if you exceed that standard, it's considered poor. So the way we look at this, how do we define good? Good is when, over the course of the past 12 months, if we've seen less than 10% of those samples come back and have exceeded that standard. Meanwhile, fair would be defined as anywhere between 11 to 25% of the samples come back exceeding that given standard, and then poor is more than four out of those 12 samples or more than 25% have exceeded the standard. So the good news on the screen here is, if you look at the parameters of turbidity and chlorophyll, across the board for these tidal creeks, we've seen good, good ratings for all of them, which is great. Those two parameters have not been problematic. And if you've listened to me for the past 17 years, that's generally speaking what we've seen across the board for those two parameters. It's rare that we see high levels of turbidity or chlorophyll, thank goodness, in these tidal creeks. So not a lot of algal blooms, which is a good thing. Dissolved oxygen, however, if you look at the screen, there's several greens and several fares and a couple of pores on there, and that's not unusual for this year compared to previous years as well. We oftentimes see some of these creeks, it's show this, demonstrate this good and fair and poor water quality. In fact, typically, what we see are some of these more stagnant, or we say, kind of swamp-like creeks, such as Prince George Creek, Island Creek as well, is a relatively, the areas we sample are relatively slower-moving, shallower waters. That inherently has lower dissolved oxygen compared to some of these other swifter, deeper creeks. And so it's not unusual what we're seeing there for dissolved oxygen, not a lot of red flags there. And this year, for the last parameter there, that bacteria, the Enterococcus bacteria, the good news this year, excuse me, is that we see four of those eight creeks are showing good ratings, which is terrific news, while three of them are fair, and only one this year has been poor, poor being in Mott Creek this year. Page's Creek this year, you'll see is fair, and that's, I'll kind of put a bookmark there for just a minute. In years past, we've seen that one perpetually or very frequently being poor. So it's a nice sign that we've seen a little improvement on that on that Page Creek for this past one year at least. But holding on to that Enterococcus results, now you're seeing just a really colorful slide on here. I'll walk you through this one real briefly. It is a long-term results. So you can see there on that Y column, the study period goes all the way back from 2008, 2009 study period, all the way till today. And you can look at each column for each creek. And you can look at each column for each creek. And you can see earlier on, we had a lot of problems with Enterococcus bacteria within these eight creeks the first, you know, five, six, seven, eight years. A lot of red on the screen, and things have cleared up. You know, Bernard's Creek is a great example, it's cleared up really nicely over the year. Mott's Creek, which was poor this year, was one of our worst offenders earlier on. And I could pause right there, and in 2015, 2016, you can see that poor ranking. And then from there on, it's been fair for the most part, with a good, and now most recently a poor. That's been one example of, I think, a good success for this program. We identified that there was that high level of bacteria within Mott Creek. The Cape Fear Public Utility Authority was starting to look at transitioning one of the big neighborhoods in the Mott Creek watershed, the Marquee Hills subdivision. I believe when there was some grant work that was being done for that program, some of the data that we had was helpful to identify that there truly was a problem and a need, and the grant really should be warranted to transition over. And sure enough, that neighborhood, the Marquee Hills subdivision, was transferred over to centralized stormwater, wastewater system through this PUA. And we've seen a cleanup really since that time. So I think this is, you know, a good example where data actually is not just data on the shelf that kind of sits there, but it can really be informative. Another one I'll point out real quickly, and we'll move on, I don't want to harbor too long, and I'll answer as many questions, of course. But Pages Creek has been an issue for many years. I've been talking to you all here, that we've seen a lot of high levels of Enterococcus bacteria within the creek, specifically of the three sampling sites that we maintain, two of which are upstream within the Bay Shore neighborhood. And of those two sites, both of them have demonstrated high levels of bacteria pretty much year after year. Now, this past year, we've seen, the past two years, it's modulated from pores to fair, which is great news. But we still are seeing high levels of that bacteria in two of those three sampling sites in that neighborhood. We have done a bunch of different investigations over the years, trying to identify where this bacteria is coming from. Some of that information is in your full annual report, and I can delve into those if you would like. But one thing that I think is encouraging is I understand that the PUA is going to be doing some, increasing the capacity of one of the lift stations, which is directly adjacent to one of our sampling sites. We're hoping when that comes online, that potentially whatever problems we could be seeing, that might be one of the opportunities for some clearing up the water in that area. That remains to be seen. Just to hark on some of the results from this past year within Airly Gardens, again, this is that freshwater lake, it's not a tidal creek, but we have three monitoring stations within Airly Gardens. We call it AG In, FD, which is in the middle of the creek, middle of the lake there, that's at a floating dock, that's why we call that site that, and AG Out, Airly Gardens Out, that's near that outfall. So what we see in this area basically is, as I mentioned, the lake is basically fills with groundwater, but it also gets a lot of stormwater input at that AG In site. And we monitor these, all three sites for these physical parameters that I mentioned earlier, also chlorophyll A, to really keep an eye on those algal blooms that can pop up from time to time. And again, those two nutrient species, we don't do any of that bacteria work. And what we've seen the past year is that at AG In, that intake, we actually see poor water quality in terms of dissolved oxygen and chlorophyll, but good turbidity. And FD, at that AG FD, the middle site, chlorophyll has been poor again. And at that out site, where it falls out of the water, we see fair in chlorophyll A, which is a little bit contradictory from what we've seen in the past. Typically, what we see is high levels of nutrients is brought into the lake through that stormwater runoff. And we see by the time it gets to the outfall, what we see is a transition, basically all that nutrient starts getting taken up and converted to chlorophyll. So what we've seen this year is a little bit different than we've seen in the past. But at the same time, what we can show you is that graph on the bottom, which shows those two species of nutrients plotted side by side over time. So the blue and the red represents the nitrate and the orthophosphate. And you can see over years, we've seen an increase in both those species of nutrients increase over year after year. Now, this past year, we saw a sudden reduction. Now, I don't know if it's statistical, we only have twelve sampling events per year, so statistics doesn't run so well without a lot of samples. So we didn't run any statistics to see if it was a meaningful reduction. But it's good news, it's a good first indicator that maybe some of the efforts that have gone forth over years, which includes installing a constructed wetland in the very front portion where that runoff comes in, and it gives a chance for some of that nutrients to maybe settle out and be taken out by some of the wetland species before it gets into the lake. And also, there's been some dredging that has occurred within the lake over the years, maybe about four or five years ago as well, which removed a lot of the muck at the bottom, which had a lot of that kind of resonant nutrients in there as well. So hopefully, we're starting to see a change or a shift for the positive in Airly Gardens. We'll see when it come next year and see what we see. So in summary, first, just on the Airly Gardens, what I just mentioned, there's been a trend of the increasing levels of those nutrients over time, with the exception of this past year. Hopefully, we'll see that continue as a trend. The chlorophyll A levels typically had been higher at the outfall, because a lot of the nutrients was converted to chlorophyll, which leads to those algal blooms. And yes, we do still see algal blooms frequently within Airly Gardens, so that does continue. And we're hoping that those management measures have started to take effect. And maybe this year, we started seeing some of the first indications that could be holding true. And harkening back to the tidal creeks, our overall conclusions for those eight tidal creeks which are monitoring. Again, turbidity and chlorophyll looks great. Year after year, we still see those same things, those parameters have not been an issue. Dissolved oxygen kind of goes back and forth, depends on how the year goes, if we see a hurricane, if we see a lot of storms, that can influence the dissolved oxygen levels. But we do see those same creeks that seem to have that kind of swampy type characteristic, they display lower dissolved oxygen. And the Enterococcus bacteria has actually improved slightly over the past several years, which is excellent news. And again, we're keeping our eye on Pages Creek, that's been our kind of redheaded stepchild that we've been chasing to try what is causing that high level of bacteria within the creek. So we're keeping our eye on there. And finally, water quality within Airly Garden appears to be driven by this nutrient-level stormwater runoff that we're hoping will modulate once some of these management measures take hold. And I think, yep, that's what I've got for you today. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir, for this presentation. It is encouraging to see the improvements that we've made over these seventeen years that you've been evaluating this. In particular, the last several years, it looks like we've got a lot of goods, only a couple of pores, a few fares. What are we missing? What's the last push that's needed? And I'm talking high level.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know that you can get into the details, you do a very good job of that. But for the benefit of me, simple layperson, how can we move the needle to get everything to the good?
Honestly, the interesting thing is, you know, this program is set forth as a monitoring program. We're not looking to figure out what has changed, we haven't really dug into what has happened. But clearly, whatever management decisions have been made, whether it be ordinances or regulations, stormwater controls, building, you know, when your land development changes to how you deal with stormwater runoff, sediment controls, like I say, something's taking shape and has helped to some degree. Now, there's been, for example, in other watersheds, I know there's been watershed restoration plans that have been adopted in Hewlus Creek, Bradley Creek. We don't monitor those, UNCW's looking at those. But we can look to see if some of those management plans, which actually have actionable, you know, I don't think they're funded necessarily, but when some of those management plans become funded, to see if maybe installing things, rain gardens, rain barrels, trying to reduce that runoff into the water, reduce the sedimentation, that can be a problem, bringing all sorts of critters and bugs and bacteria and nutrients and who knows what else into there. When we see some of those things implemented, I think we're seeing that kind of slow drip of improvement. So I can't answer you with a really clear cut, which I'm sure you knew that was my answer.
Yes, sir.
It's not that, it's kind of the death by a thousand cuts that reduces the water quality, and we're hoping that it's the improvement by a thousand different actions is going to hopefully help improve, continue the improvement over the time. Now, we have, going back to Pages Creek, that's been that kind of, like I said, that redheaded stepchild. We've been focused on that one for a while, because we actually did some early studies when we saw such high levels of bacteria in that one. The county spent considerable investment looking at what is causing that high level of bacteria. And we started looking in concern, because of the concern, it's a, when you see high levels of bacteria, it's an indicator that there may be a human health concern. There could be different viruses or other pathogens that could be harmful to humans if you're swimming when there's high levels of bacteria. So we did some testing. One thing that we looked at was, what is the source of this bacteria in terms of, is it coming from dogs, cats, birds, or humans? And sure enough, after some various studies that we've done over the years, humans is a contamination, is a problem, one of the sources of that bacteria. And we've been stymied. We've done a number of studies looking at geographically where within the watershed that's coming from. We've looked at high-resolution aerial imagery with infrared cameras, trying to find if there's any discharge that could be bringing this in. We haven't put our finger on it just yet, and we've continued to do that over the years. This past year, we didn't, we didn't receive funds to continue that study. We do know that the CFPUA will be looking at producing some infrastructure improvements in one of the lift stations nearby. And the thought is, let's see if that infrastructure improvement may actually solve the problem. If it doesn't, we're going to start putting our head back together and looking a little more comprehensively where we can improve that water quality within Pages Creek and keep going down that road of mystery.
Thank you. That was a very good answer to, as you acknowledged, a somewhat difficult question. Let's stay on this, though.
Sure thing.
So I'll lead in on what Dame was talking about, or Commissioners, please, about Pages Creek, to talk about it a little bit. It's chronically been an issue, and you did note that the restoration or the fix down in Bernard's Creek or down there with CFPUA.
Mott's Creek, yeah.
What you, and Mott's Creek did help. So if they're doing some repairs or some changes in Pages Creek, that might be due to some of the contamination due to whatever septic tanks. I don't know, I know Bay Shore does kind of, they're a little bit lower than, I mean, I live in Ogden, but they're a little bit lower, it tends to kind of get a lot of the water. So I don't know if they're just getting all the, but I mean, it's definitely something that needs more study because it's been chronically bad. And I, I've heard from citizens that are very frustrated with the fact that they can't, you know, they can't use the recreation facilities. A lot of those communities have like water access, and they're just not allowed to swim in it or shellfish in it or fish in it at all. And I think that if we can figure that out, we can help. Now, I had a question about the Airly. So do you tend to see the higher levels where there are more fertilizer being put out or, I mean, runoff from, I don't know, it could be just about anything, and it looks like they're elevated in like summer months?
Yeah, typically, actually, I'll put a bookmark in that, I want to go right back really quick to your Pages Creek comment, and then I'll move on to your Airly, just to, what is, is a great point, you know, where is this coming from? Could it be from septic system? Where's it coming from? And one thing we looked at early on was recognizing the fact that the Bay Shore neighborhood has been serviced by centralized sewer for many years now, you know, over twenty years from what I understand at this point. And so they have left their septic systems and abandoned their septic systems, hopefully abandoned them properly, and they're no longer, should be hooked up. So that shouldn't be an issue. But years ago, when this problem started to emerge, we did work with Environmental Health to try to identify were there any illicit hookups or any hooks that never did hook up when they were supposed to. So there was an investigation internally by Environmental Health to try and document any homes that could be contributing. And at the time, nothing came out of that as far as, nothing was identified, there was no smoking guns from that situation either. So that, at least, we can hopefully rule out that there is illicit discharges from septic tanks or, you know, leaking still. So anyway, going back to that CFPUA, like you mentioned, will be doing this capacity increase, and we'll see if maybe through doing that, you, some sort of cleaning up in the waterway there. Going back to Airly Gardens, though, what you mentioned, you're absolutely correct. If you look at the data, just like we see in the tidal creeks as well, typically in the summer months, we see a reduction in dissolved oxygen. The water gets warm, the water doesn't have as much capacity to hold oxygen as in the cold weather months. So we do see a reduction of dissolved oxygen, especially as we see the breakdown of any sort of plant life, the bacteria take up oxygen often. And so that's why in the summer months we'll see that. And it also results in spurring those algal. And so you're absolutely right, in algal, Airly Gardens, that's what we do see. And as a fertilizer, as whatever it might be, whatever's in that runoff is getting into the lake. I can't tell you what's in that runoff necessarily. We do have that sampling spot that's relatively close to that intake area where the water is kind of channeled into the lake, where it goes through that constructed wetland. And so one thing we've noticed is that it's gotten slightly better since that wetland has been built. The jury's still really out if it's truly effective or if it's causative, you know, correlation there or not. But there was a pretty significant development across the street from that area on Airly Road, maybe four or five years ago, when they were turning dirt over there earlier on. We did see high levels of turbidity at the time, we did see some disruptions of water quality. Since then, I think things have been kind of quote-unquote back to normal. But whatever's in that runoff could be coming into the lake.
And you tried to restore wetlands in order to help filter some of that?
That's, that's one of the methodologies, one of the kind of best management practices is a constructed wetland. Basically, you're creating an environment where you're putting plants that will thrive in the water, giving them an opportunity to take up all that nutrients and grow into, you know, your typical wetland species before it gets into the lake where otherwise these kind of more harmful, not necessarily harmful algal blooms, but algal blooms can occur that takes out the oxygen. As, and that algae dies, it goes to the bottom, it takes out the oxygen, is harmful to the aquatic life.
Right. And aquatic life is, I'm sorry, one more question. The aquatic life, it's affected by all that. Do you see, I know there are turtles in there, I've been to Airly.
There's a lot of turtles.
And they seem okay, but people don't fish in there or anything like that?
Right. There's, I don't, it's probably, my guess is, Airly Gardens doesn't allow fishing, is my guess. But yeah, people don't fish there, people don't swim. It's truly, and you know, it's an aesthetic, it's a beautiful part of the county, and we don't want to see mats of algae growing and, you know, smelling algae rotting and that sort of thing. So that's why we like to keep our hand on that. But yeah, the turtles, they're not affected necessarily, they swim above and breathe above.
That's good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Thanks. Brad, thank you again for a wonderful report on many different ways and being able to talk detail on all these questions. I'd like to pick up on something that Commissioner Scalise was leading into, and I think if I'm hearing him right, was what, what can we do as citizens? You know, the simple things. We depend on you for the monitoring and full departments and, you know, scores of people in the city and the county working on this, but as an individual homeowner or citizen in our community. I know that something as simple as picking up animal waste, just paying attention to it. I know it's a pain in the neck, but it actually has a real positive impact on our waterways and the health of our intercoastal and all of our creeks, something that's simple. Also, you know, installing rainwater gardens and ponds, if you're doing any kind of landscaping around your house, something that's simple, so that you can allow water that comes off your roof and out of your gutters and downspouts to remain on your property and filtered through there, rather than just running out onto the street and, you know, into the stormwater system. Also, if you're doing any kind of hardscaping, meaning, you know, driveways or in your yard using pervious concrete or the materials that allow water to filter down through the land rather than just run off the surface, trying to prevent that surface runoff. Also, this is kind of a in-the-weeds thing from construction, but we all drive by different areas that sometimes happen in our neighborhood where you see those silt fences, those material fences that have stakes in there, trying to keep the runoff from going there. And sometimes they get ripped or torn down or a truck hits them on there. If you just take thirty seconds to stand that back up again, those silt fences actually are a first line of defense and really do exactly what they're supposed to do. But if you see one that's kind of ripped down, stand it back up again, or at least go talk to the contractor or the supervisor and say, hey, could you repair it? It makes a huge difference. And the silt flows off into the waterway, you get turbidity like that. So these are simple things that we do as, as community members. And whenever you have the opportunity to put a swale in instead of a hard curb, I know that sounds wonky, but something as simple as using, you know, the materials that you that you have on your property or around there, grass and create a, a swale, a hump, do you help control the flow of the water? Also, a question to you, Brad, where does orthophosphate come from?
So it is a natural occurring nutrient that's found in the soils. It, it's part of the cycling of plant matter. It's in plants, it's, it's in nature, and it gets brought forth, I mean, we, we fertilize our plants for a reason. We hopefully do it, you know, in control, but that's one of the nutrients that our plants need to thrive on is phosphate, it's phosphorus.
I see.
So it's part, orthophosphate is just one species of phosphorus.
I see. You also touched on briefly the development on Airly Road, that directly across from the intake of the Airly Gardens Lake. So I, I know that Airly, um, Airly Gardens, the staff there has tried very hard to filter, operate, to segregate that water that's coming across the road on that. And so I know they're, they will continue to look at your monitoring reports and they, they do their own monitoring of that entire area and the dredging, which I think has had a positive effect. But it's, you know, it's the development across there, you know, trying to control that runoff. My last point is, again, you, we've hit on it several times here, is that Pages Creek, there's been, I think we took an agenda briefing, five, six, seven years of work, very frustrating work by CFPUA, by yourself, by UNCW, using every technique that we can think of to try and locate where, what is the source of this intercoacite that's, that continues and persists. And I know that speaking for CFPUA, they have, you know, looked very hard at their pump stations, the lift stations that they have there and their piping, and they are, you know, sure that it's not coming from there. Although, again, the work that you referred to of them actually going and rebuilding one of their lift stations on there may, you know, be something they, they just couldn't discover. So I appreciate your continued focus on Pages Creek and trying to find that source of the contamination that goes there because it, it sure would be nice if we could, you know, to shellfish again there or be able to, you know, dive into Pages Creek or, you know, put our boats in and out without having to worry about the contamination that's, you know, currently in the water. That goes for all of our waterways and creeks. And the first step of going there, oh, one more thing, I just got to give a shout out to our Stormwater Utility, that the county stood up three years ago, I guess now, four years, yeah? And, and what it, you know, it impacted, cleaning out the ditches and the different culverts to try and, you know, make an impact throughout our entire county. That's one thing that the county is doing and investing in, you know, through our citizens and through that Stormwater Utility fee that we are, that we all pay as citizens in the unincorporated portion of the county. So thanks to all the hard men and women who are working there to make that happen, and thank you for monitoring services once again.
Sure. I'll just add to your, you were mentioning all these measures that could take forth from, you know, kind of the everyday Joe at home listening, you know, whether it be pick up your dog waste, whether it's putting out a rain barrel or having a rain garden installed, all those measures collectively could have impact. You know, if, if multiple people start doing this, it's just like anything, you know, it takes a village type of thing. I'd encourage you all to take a look at a recently completed Pages Creek Restoration Plan where I believe it was the county's maybe soil and, uh, Water and Soil.
Conservation.
Conservation, thank you. I can never get the name straightened. Put together, and there's a lot of measures which include a lot of those sorts of everyday, you know, Joe that you can implement. And ultimately, by putting this all together, we're hoping that if folks engage, we can reduce the volume of the runoff that goes into these creeks. So it's not just Pages Creek, it's all these creeks. But if you can reduce the volume of water that goes directly into the creek without having a chance to settle out some of those sediment or nutrients or whatever it might be, and also we're, and thereby not only reducing the volume, but also increasing the quality of the water that gets in there. So collectively, hopefully, we can see some, you know, little tick ever so slightly.
So I would say, just adding to that, the last thing is the Arboretum and NC State, they have a rain water, a rain garden program, and anybody can find out about it, plant trees, there's a lot of things people can do in their own yards to help capture water and filter.
Good. Rebecca, speak briefly to Pages Creek.
Stormwater watershed management.
Yes, so Drew Harrison with Soil and Water wasn't able to be here today, but she did share some updates in case the question came up. So in addition to the ways that residents can already help in improving water quality, it is important to note that in the Pages Creek watershed, Soil and Water also passed funding as part of their budget, where there is a list of residents who are interested in working with them on installing best management practices such as rain gardens, rain barrels, and Soil and Water can actually contribute to a cost for these projects. And so they can contact County Soil and Water to learn more about that and to potentially get their name on that list. In addition, Soil and Water is also working with the Lutheran Church on Market Street on a project that will remove impervious and improve their design of their parking lot facility to also help with addressing stormwater runoff into Pages Creek and has partnering with other conservation groups. We're looking at a study of the Dunbar waters to develop a, basically a project to see what are some of the best managements for steam restoration in this area. So there is a large amount of work being done in Pages Creek beyond what we've been working on based on this monitoring program that we wanted to make sure people were familiar with.
Rebecca, could you expand just a little bit on Soil and Water Conservation District? That's the official name of it. So if somebody was interested in tracking down the information you're talking about, that is the name, it doesn't roll right off your tongue or come right to mind. It's Soil and Water Conservation District.
Correct.
New Hanover County Soil and Water, is it?
Correct. There's a separate elected board that leads and advises the Soil and Water Conservation District, but Drew Harrison, who I mentioned, who's the director of that division, she also is a county employee, and you can find all this information on the Hanover County website.
Great. NHCGOV.com.
Correct.
Operator standing by.
Regularly have openings. Need anybody help?
All right, thank you, Brad.
We just had one, put it on. Three, yes. It doesn't happen all the time, but it happens.
Next is consideration of local transition recommendation for the Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team. John.
Commissioners, a come before you today, the agenda item that was before you was to recognize a local team. However, I do have a, an update to share with you. At the tail end of last week, the North Carolina Gymbearly, General Assembly met and vetoed the governor's, overridden the governor's veto of Senate Bill 380. That action alters the timeline of the creation of a combined local child fatality system. Because of that, we are requesting a continuance of this agenda item until June 16th of 2025.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is June 20, uh, June 32nd, fourth of the first, first quarter fiscal year 25. Very credible.
Good morning again. We're here to review the financial results of the county for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024, and for the first quarter of this fiscal year. This will include a discussion of the county's investment portfolio as well as debt outstanding and remaining debt capacity. As an overview, the county's financial position remains sound. Our unassigned general fund balance remains in the targeted range. The results of all of their funds are in line with expectations, and our AAA bond ratings were affirmed in August. That said, things are a bit tighter than in prior, compared to prior years. In each of the prior three fiscal years, we budgeted to use a portion of our accumulated fund balance, but thanks primarily to excess sales tax revenue, we did not actually have to do that. In fiscal year 24, we did spend slightly more than we brought in, which resulted in our general fund balance declining by $1.7 million. This is not a major source of concern, it's just a contrast to the surplus as experienced in prior recent years. This slide further illustrates that. The red bar for each year is the actual revenue, while the blue bar is the budgeted revenue. You can see in fiscal year 22 that actual revenue exceeded the budget by $20 million, 367 million versus 347 million. And in fiscal year 23, actual revenue exceeded budget by $12 million, 375 versus 363. And fiscal year 24, revenue came in $4 million under the budget at 390 million compared to a budget of 394 million. The green line on this chart is our expenditures. You can see the expenditures came in at or below the revenue bar for fiscal year 22 and 23, whereas in fiscal year 24, expenditures slightly exceeded revenue. You can see some of the biggest variances on the right-hand side of this slide. Intergovernmental revenue has the biggest negative variance of $5 million, but that is primarily grant revenue and has generally offset dollar for dollar with lower associated expenses. So from a net income perspective, the lower sales tax revenue was the most significant Here are a few highlights from our balance sheet. Thanks to conservative fund balance targets and hospital sale proceeds that are part of our general fund, we continue to have a strong and liquid balance sheet. Of the total fund balance, the unassigned fund balance, which does not include the escrow accounts or other restricted amounts, finished the year at 73.6 million, which amounts to 18.2% of our annual expenditures and is a decline from 79.6 million in the prior year. This slide also references our capital improvement plan. As a reminder, our capital improvement plan balance holds transfers from the unassigned fund in any year in which the unassigned fund balance exceeds 21%. Once it is moved to the CIP line item, our policies that remain in that line item even if the unassigned fund balance falls below 21% in a given year like it did this year. As shown here, our capital improvement fund, fund balance amounted to $13.4 million at year-end compared to $22.1 million in the prior year, with the decline primarily caused by the $5.6 billion spent on the new Board of Elections building that we paid for from this line item. This slide shows a six-year history of our unassigned fund balance and our capital improvement plan as a percentage of our expenditures, with the combined percentage, combined percentage of the two shown in the box at the top of each column. After falling below 18% as a result of the Hurricane Florence emergency expenditures in 2019, you can see that the unassigned fund balance built back up by, by 21% by 2021 and then transfers to the CIP beginning that same year for all amounts over the 21%. As you can see, the total of these two components of fund balance were nearly 27% for the two prior year ends before falling to 21.5% this year for the reasons discussed. This slide also notes that our policy minimum is 8%, so we're well above that and we're within the 18 to 21% stated target range that we set. Next, I try to, I strive to provide an update once a year on our investment bond holdings, which totaled $412 million year, at year-end, is primarily concentrated in our escrow accounts. I've noted in prior year updates that upon the receipt of the proceeds from the hospital, those funds were invested when interest rates were very low, using a maturity laddering strategy whereby 10% of the proceeds were invested in annual maturities going out 10 When interest rates rose, the value, the market value of those securities declined, and we recorded unrealized losses within our general fund financial statements primarily in the restricted fund balance accounts. The plan has always been to hold those bonds until they mature and receive the full face value of each bond at maturity with no loss to the county. And as those bonds approach maturity, the unrealized losses reverse. That plan continues to play out as expected, and we recorded $7.4 million in unrealized gains within our general fund in fiscal year 24, with the unrealized loss position declining from $35 million to 29, $25 million at year-end. The gain is favorable but only minimally impacts the unassigned general fund balance because most all of the unrealized gains and losses are within the restricted escrow accounts. Our investment horizon with cash held and our unassigned fund balance is generally no more than two years, which reduces volatility in that, that part of the fund. You can see at the bottom of this slide that as the low interest rate bonds have matured, we've been able to reinvest the proceeds in the much higher interest rate environment, which has improved our interest earnings significantly over the last several years. Next is an update on our debt and debt capacity. At June 30th, 2024, the county had $432 million in debt outstanding. This is an increase of $17 million from the prior year, and is $9 million less than two years ago. During fiscal '24, we made $46 million in principal repayments and issued $63 million in new debt, with the majority of that relating to the project race. Of the $432 million of outstanding debt, just under $200 million of that relates to college and school debt issuances. We have three debt policy guidelines that the county has adopted to ensure that we don't overextend and that we are best positioned to maintain our AAA bond ratings. The policy that is currently the most constraining is that the amount of debt per capita shall stay under $2,200 per person. With just over 240,000 county residents, that translates to a maximum debt capacity of $534 million. When compared to the outstanding debt of 432 million, that results in unused debt capacity of 100, approximately 102 million. Forecasting ahead to where we may be at the end of fiscal year 25, we issued $37 million in debt early this fiscal year, primarily related to two new fire stations as well as the project, North Chase Library. We project to issue another 15 to 20 million late this fiscal year for budgeted capital outlay, which includes several parks and trails projects. With $48 million in projected repayments, it is unlikely that we will expand our debt capacity this fiscal year. However, however, looking further ahead, borrowing needs associated with projects that are currently on our project to-do list declined significantly. Now for an update on first quarter fiscal year 25. As a reminder, there's a, this is a pie chart showing our budgeted general fund revenues for the year. Property taxes generate about 28% of our revenue, and sales taxes about 25%. So 83% of our total revenue is derived from those two sources. This slide shows a history of our property tax rate since the last property tax revaluation. As you can see, this year's tax rate of 45 cents per $100 assessed value is the same as the prior year rate and represents a 2.5% I'm sorry, 2.5 cent decrease from the rate in 2022. That 2.5 cent decline equates to $12.9 million in annual tax revenue, while total inflation over that same period exceeded 17%. As noted here, property tax bills were mailed in late July, and our citizens were able to pay interest free until January 5th, 2025. Based on that timing, the majority of property tax bills are paid in December and January. As we saw on the pie chart, at 25% of budgeted revenue, sales taxes are second largest revenue source. Sales taxes are received at a three-month lag from the state, and September 30th financial results included in today's package do not yet include that revenue. But now that we are in December, we know the sales tax receipts for July through September, which are shown in this chart. As you can see here, the sales tax revenue has been relatively flat over the past three years, with $30.3 million two years ago for the first three months of fiscal year versus $30.5 million a year ago, and $29.8 million for the first three months of this fiscal year. The 25, fiscal year 25 amount is $1.3 million under budget and thus presents a challenge for this year. The next few slides present information related to the county's most significant funds. This slide shows the total revenue and expenses for the general fund for the first three months of the year. The dark blue is the actual for the year to date, the light blue is our expected budget at this point in the year, the orange bar is the prior year, and the green is from two years ago. As it relates to revenue, and as we will see in more detail on the next slide, receipts have totaled $58 million compared to $54 million in the budget and the prior year amount of $57 million. So those are all favorable revenue variances. As it relates to expenditures, we have spent $92 million, which is lower than the budget of $95.5 million compared to $89 million in the prior year. This slide provides more detail on the general fund revenue. Property tax revenue received through September 30th amounted to $41.4 million compared to a budget of $39.4 million and prior year actual of $39.8 million. We believe the faster-than-expected property tax receipts are related to ongoing increased usage of electronic payment options. With a collection rate of over 99.5% and known fixed property values, we expect that property tax revenue will not vary significantly from budget when the year concludes. The other revenue category shown on the right side of the chart shows receipts of $16.9 million compared to a budget of $14.9 and prior year of $16.9 million. Compared to budget, the increase is primarily due to the timing of intergovernmental revenue receipts as well as proceeds from the September debt issuance that were related, that were related to several general fund items being financed that normally does not occur until later in the year. The borrowings earlier in the year compared to when we normally. The borrowings earlier in the year compared to what we normally do. As we saw two slides ago, our expenditures year-to-date are ninety-two million, are tracking under budget by three point five million dollars and compare to eighty-nine point two million in the prior year. Throughout, through the first quarter of this year, the county has expended twenty-one point three percent of the total budget, which is very close to the twenty-one point one percent expenditure rate for the prior year. This slide shows expenditures by government function. The most noteworthy variance is general government shows being over budget of three point four million dollars, while the three other primary functions are under budget by one, between one to three million dollars. Those variances are simply due to a change in the way we've allocated our major insurance coverages this year. Absent that allocation change, each function, each function's expenditures are in line with, were slightly lower than budget. So in summary, as it relates to the general fund, while noting the headwinds of sales taxes, revenues and expenditures are steady and generally in line or better than expectations. This slide relates to the debt service fund. Revenue for this fund is comprised of property taxes, sales taxes, and transfers in from the general fund. Due to timing, those revenue sources are low at this point in fiscal year. Expenditures in these funds, this funds are made according to repayment schedules for the underlying debt. The decline in expenditures in fiscal year twenty-five versus budget and prior year is due solely to when the payments are due as budgeted debt service payments are higher for this fiscal year compared to the last fiscal year. The environmental management fund, which includes the county's landfill, is not tax dependent. It is a self-sufficient fund that charges fees for the services it provides. As you can see, revenue of three point nine million dollars is higher than both the budget of three point four million and the prior year actual of three point seven million, while tonnage received is slightly lower than prior year. And while the general tip fee rate of fifty-two dollars per ton is unchanged from the prior year, tip fees vary based on category and our analysis showed that the mix of tonnage this year was more heavily weighted toward the higher tip fee rates. As it relates to expenditures, you can see that the right chart shows four point one million dollars of actual expenditures for the first quarter, which exceeded the budget and prior year by approximately one million dollars. The variance is due to the timing of a budgeted capital outlay for a waste shredder that costs one point one million dollars and was delivered in July. As it relates to fire services, at this point in the year, virtually all of its revenues are derived from property taxes, which as we discussed earlier are running ahead of, ahead of budget. All categories of expense are running under budget in this fund with by far the biggest variance being capital outlay, which have been minimal thus far due to the timing of when purchases are scheduled to occur. As y'all noted, this is the fourth year of the county providing stormwater services to the unincorporated county and the third full year, third year of full service charge is being charged. After no changes to this fee in the prior years, the fee was increased by eight point seven percent for this fiscal year in order to address higher costs and to be able to continue to deliver effective service. Stormwater fees through September thirtieth amounted to one point one million dollars compared to a budget of one million and the prior year actual nine hundred thousand. Expenditures of eight hundred thousand dollars are in line with budget in the prior year and include an excavator that was delivered in the first quarter of this fiscal year. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have anything?
A couple, Eric, thank you for that. You took us around the world here on, on that and a lot of really wonderful information, all of which to me ends up pretty positive, mainly because you've done a great job in controlling expenses. So, thank you, Mr. Manager. That's really been helpful with the slowdown in the sales tax. It's really balanced it out. A couple of points that you, you kind of jumped over, I know you're aware, but I just want to make sure that especially with the fire services, we also have two new firehouses that we're bringing online, which will impact some of those numbers that are fully budgeted, right? And have we borrowed the money for that already? Those?
Yes, sir.
That's the one at Castle Hain and the other one on Gordon Road.
That's right.
Great. And you mentioned with the environmental management, the fifty-two dollars per ton, that it was more heavily weighted towards, is that general household trash as opposed to construction debris?
I believe it was the construction debris was what, when I talked to you about this, there was more of that this year and less kind of recyclables that have a much lower fee associated with them.
I see. Okay. Thanks. I just wanted some clarity on that. Insurance rates, do we have any kind of control over that? Is it, are we to the point where we need to reach out and look at other, you know, insurance companies? Or is this?
I may not have explained that well.
Yes.
The variances were really just due to the way we allocate it. We used to allocate insurance out to the various departments, but those are really uncontrollable expenses. We moved them all to the home office this year, so it's making their performance very expensive, lower than we'd otherwise think.
I see.
And it's just shifted to the home office. Insurance has gone up some, but it was, it's really just an accounting change that caused the variance.
Great. I didn't understand that completely the way you explained it. So thanks for that clarification. Sounds like the electronic payments are really working out great for property taxes. Ninety-nine point five percent collection rate. Did I hear that right?
Yes, sir. I think it's actually ninety-nine percent. So Alson or team do a great job on that.
I think also embedded in that figure is, I would have to say, a very satisfied customer base, meaning our constituents. They understand and appreciate the services that we are providing. I think we're doing a good job communicating that to them and providing services. At least that's how I, at least a partial interpretation of that in an optimistic world. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, next we move to committee appointments. First one is New Hanover County City of Women's and Community Relations Advisory Commission. We need one and there's only one there.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Sharon Murphy for the faith community category.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, New Hanover County Commission on African-American Indigenous Culture.
Terilyn Phillips.
Second.
Favor, aye?
Aye.
Does New Hanover County Cooperative Extension Advisory Council?
Jeanne Lennon.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'll just note that there appear to be some additional vacancies. Madam Clerk, we're continuing to advertise. So to the public, we have, for instance, vacancies that we don't always have enough applicants to fill. This is an example. New Hanover County Cooperative Extension Advisory Council, I believe there are two vacancies that we still have available to fill. Please consider applying. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. New Hanover County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Nominate Nikki Bascom.
And Reagan Faulkner for the underage twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor? New Hanover County Library Advisory Board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Paul Niggle.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And New Hanover County Tourism Authority.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Fitz Pittman and Angela Roth for those positions.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had an additional item I'd like to bring forward. Ms. Roth, are you here? Could I ask you to step forward? Thank you, Rebecca. Rebecca's head of our zoning and planning department. This is in reference to the proposal for the Hilton Bluffs development on the Sledge Forest property off of Castle Hain Road. There's been considerable discussion within the county department and in the community about this project. It's clear there's still many unknowns for the property. The impacts of development on scale that is being proposed on the existing communities in the area and on the infrastructure in the northern portion of our county. I'd like to ask you for your department to gather more information about this project and research the potential of a permit modification that would require the submission of information by the applicant that addresses key areas of concern before moving forward with the approval process. Some of those areas, and you may have others to add to this, are the verification of soil types and identification and certification of marshlands and wetlands. When appropriate, assurances that all CAMA, C-A-M-A permitting is complete or that there's a reasonable expectation by CAMA officials that permits will be issued. Number three, in areas that are located in or adjacent to existing floodplains, that the most current NOAA or NOAA floodplain maps are being. Also verification of transportation access to the proposed areas of development. Verification and description of the location and the extent of the biodiversity located on the proposed development site. And finally, given the traffic concerns, I'd like also for staff to look at how our standards can better consider the impacts of projects on existing roadways. So if you could please research this and bring this back to the commission at a future date, I'd be most appreciative.
Mr. Chair, if I might add some comments. Thank you, Commissioner Zappel, for reading off those items. We have had quite a few members of the community reach out to us to express concern about the Hilton Bluffs development, about Sledge Forest. There are a number of names that are floating around there. I have a note card from someone that I received that in part reads, "We deserve to be heard." And yes, you certainly do deserve to be heard. The concern that perhaps in some of the messaging that's been out there, there's been this perception that there's a foregone conclusion, there's nothing that can be done, there is a process and we're going to rubber stamp it. We don't rubber stamp anything at New Hanover County. And part of what I think Rob and I, perhaps some of the other commissioners, want to help communicate to the public is that we are going to look into this matter to make sure that all formalities are being followed, that the rules and regulations that the county has previously established are in fact being complied with that they're supposed to be. And that we further understand some of the implications that are out there, such as the ones that Rob read into the record just a moment ago. So I would encourage you and your staff to please look diligently into this matter. And again, we want the public to know we have heard you, you are being heard, and we are going to look into this matter to find out what, if anything, is available to be done to make sure that we're doing the right things, complying with the law here in New Hanover County. But do not, please, make an assumption that because there has been some phrasing that there is a by right conclusion, that we're just going to, again, rubber stamp this matter. We don't rubber stamp anything in New Hanover County.
Did you all that?
I did. So if it's the will of the board, we'd be glad to look into this further. Of course, as Commissioner Scalise mentioned, the review of this project is still ongoing. There have been no approvals made and we are still making sure that we have the information we need to ensure that the project is complying with all of our regulations. My understanding is that there are questions about our process and when certain information is required as we move through potential approvals. And if it's the pleasure of the board, we'd be glad to look into that further to make sure that our processes ensure that some of these concerns are addressed. And if there are any concerns y'all have that would require changes to policies that we identify though, so y'all can take the appropriate steps necessary to address what it is that you feel policy perspective is important.
So to be clear, for the benefit of my fellow commissioners, I believe that Ms. Roth is looking for confirmation and affirmation from at least a majority of this board that you are in agreement that staff should in fact look into this matter as Rob and I have suggested.
Yes. Do you need, Rebecca, would it make you, would it be better for us to have a formal vote on this to bring this action forward?
Commissioner Zappel, I don't know that we would want you to take a vote. I think primarily to understand there's a consensus with at least three members that this is a way that staff should spend its time.
I think you have that.
If I might, Mr. Chair, but just for some more clarity, I don't think any of us are applying your legal on your job. I think that we want to go to the highest level of due diligence for our citizens and I think that's what you're hearing here. I think it's important that our citizens know what is the process and what are those, let's call it hoops, that a developer would have to jump through, especially those projects that don't come to the county commissioner for us to comment on. So I think that's what you and I had discussed and I think that offers some clarity. And I think that's what I hear the fellow commissioners here saying is we don't want to miss anything. So let's pay extra attention to those items.
Yes, and we'd be glad to bring back some of that information to make sure it's as clear as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. Now we've got two speakers. First one is Doug New, I guess is how you say it. Mr. New, you have, you state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Douglas New. I'm at nine twenty-four Genoa Loop in Castle Hain, two eight four two nine. I'm here to speak out against the Sledge Forest and the Hilton Bluffs development. I am new to the county. I, when I moved here, I certainly didn't expect there to be no development in my community. You know, any community needs development to sustain itself and to be a vibrant community. But from what I hear, this four thousand home development is going to inundate our community with upwards of thirty thousand car trips a day on a two-lane, you know, country road, which is designed for that kind of traffic. We, we actually had, I think it's very telling, that we had CFPUA here to give a detailed report on their facilities and, you know, can they sustain four thousand new homes? We had another environmental report here, you know, laying out the, how the water is coming back and it's improving. So now you're going to put in another development, which wants to include, my understanding, a golf course on the Upper Cape Fear River. And we all know that golf courses are the biggest bluders around and they're going to put that right on a river. And it just, it makes no sense to me. My understanding is that there's a law in place, whether it's county or state, I'm not sure, that allows one home per acre. And by him taking three thousand acres and saying, okay, that, I'm not going to develop that, but I'm going to put four thousand homes on a thousand acres, seems to me that law could never have been written with that intention. Maybe it was written for a smaller scale, someone who has a few, you know, four or five acres and wants to put homes, but wants to maintain an area that is undeveloped. So it seems to me that this developer coming from Charlotte out of town wants to make his living here and walk away and leave us with his problems to deal with. Now certainly, he's not going to build four thousand homes overnight, but whatever his timeline is, it's going to have a effect on this community for, you know, for far into the future. So please, I don't know what the, you know, the public can do as far as speaking out against this and what effect it has, but I want it on the public record that I am against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Bill Jane?
Good morning. My name's Jane and I live in Rosewood Landing Drive in Castle Hain. And I want to, I've been a resident of New Hanover County for almost twenty years and have been very much involved over that period of time with preservation of our natural and historic resources. I'm a former chair of the Wilmington Tree Commission, founder, one of the founders of the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees, a former member of Historic Wilmington Foundation. And I want to thank the members of the board for their action this morning in asking the planning department to check further on this Sledge Forest project. And my, my message, my request clearly to you is to save Sledge Forest. First of all, this, the area of this development has been considered valuable conservation land for decades. land for decades. The North Carolina Natural Heritage Program in the early two thousands designated Sledge Forest as a significant natural heritage area. It was shown as conservation area in both the two thousand six CAMA land use plan as well as the two thousand sixteen plan, New Hanover County Comprehensive Plan. It would seem that the three thousand acres of the marsh never should have been zoned RA, it was never practical to build even one home per acre there. And the performance housing regulations state that all natural lakes, ponds, rivers and marshes are to be subtracted in calculating the density for performance housing development. The application did not subtract that, so the marsh would have to be conserved in its The county's technical review committee said that these performance residential standards would require that entire area to be conserved. I want to make the point very quickly that there's no, you know, we draw lines on a map, but the river, the marsh, the so-called uplands, all of which are below twenty feet elevation and above sea level are all one.